Jesus, it's loose. All right. All right, seeing the hour, six o'clock having arrived, I'll call the Tuesday, June 3rd council meeting to order, roll call, Heather.
Patrick Singer.
Here.
Greg Mychek.
Here.
Mike Smith.
Here.
Brian Shannon.
Here.
Steve Sayoun.
Here.
Orin Smith. Neil Hicks.
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum, so if everybody would rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to declare the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next up, we have approval of the agenda. I know there was an email the clerk sent out about pulling item number 22, which was ordinance 25020, which would amend Chapter 2.48.080, which is removal of members to extend to boards and committees. So, as we make that motion, if that could be reflected, so if there's anything else on the agenda, anybody wants to move around?
Is that coming back at a future time?
Yes.
Okay.
It's just not ready yet.
That's number 22 you said?
Yep.
Yep, 22 would be off tonight and at a future agenda, or a future meeting.
Move approval with striking of item number 22, ordinance 2025020, for it to come back at a later date.
All right, so the motion was moved by Shannon, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mychek to approve the agenda with the removal of item number 22. All in favor of approving the regular agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, that agenda is approved. Next up, we have the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be approved together unless any council members request that an item be removed for individual consideration. Are there any modifications anybody would like to add or remove at this time from the consent agenda? Neil?
Let them move 18, 24, and 25 into consent agenda.
All right, 18 is update on parking lot C, corner of Whitewater Street and Center Street, which is a memo was in our packet. 24, you said?
24, 25, yeah.
Yep, discussion and possible action, which would basically be canceling the July 1st, 2025 common council meeting, as we usually do. If there is emergent business, we can always hold that or a special. And then request for approval, so this would be approving the annual renewals of certain Class A, Class A, all the Class A, Class B, and Class B beer and liquor licenses.
As recommended by the ALC.
Yes.
Yeah.
Second.
All right, so there was a motion to approve the consent agenda by Hicks with the additions of those three items, seconded by Shannon. Any other changes anybody wishes to make? All right, so Heather, if you'd please call the agenda items that are on the consent agenda, and then we'll have public comment.
Approval of common council meeting minutes from May 20th, 2025, approval of common council visioning session meeting minutes from May 13th, 2025, community development authority meeting minutes from April 8th, 2025, April 17th, 2025, library board of trustees meeting minutes from April 21st, 2025, Parks and Rec Board meeting minutes from April 19th, 2025, I'm sorry, March 19th, 2025, April 16th, 2025, Urban Forestry Commission meeting minutes from October 10th, 2024, January 17th, January 27th, 2025, February 24th, 2025, and March 24th, 2025, Finance Committee meeting minutes from April 22nd, 2025, Equal Opportunities Commission meeting minutes from February 3rd, 2025, resignation of Mark Dorn from the Community Involvement and Cable TV Commission, resignation of Gloria Bluey from Landmarks Commission, recommendations of Elena Levy Navarro to Aquatic Center Committee, recommendation of award of janitorial services contract to Perfection Plus Building Services, recommendation of contract award to CCP's Forda Voice for the Telephony RFP, recommendation to extend the contract for flock cameras, Police Department vehicle replacement schedule, closed session meeting minutes memo. 18 is update on parking lot C, corner of Whitewater Street and Center Street, and then just the cancellation of July 1 common council meeting, and the approval of the license, alcohol license renewals, A, B, that's all I have, yeah, A, B, and beer and liquor.
All right, the motion is to approve. Is there any public comment on anything on the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, Heather, if you please, please call the roll.
Mike Smith?
Yes.
Mychek?
Yeah.
Singer?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Sayoun?
Aye.
Hicks?
Aye.
All right, that motion passes, move on to our next item, which is city manager report. John?
Okay, as always, the full details are available in the packet, and we also send it out to all of our staff, so I'm just going to hit the highlights. And we'll start in public works with construction news. Walworth Avenue between Janesville Street and Highway 12 is scheduled to be closed starting June 9th. Motorists going to the high school or the aquatic center, aquatic and fitness center need to cross at Walworth Avenue and Elizabeth Street. And also on June 9th, Steren Road between Warhawk Drive and Prairie Street will be closed to traffic. The university will be in the process of installing new steam and, guessing it's condensation piping. Anyway, the project is anticipated to be completed by June 18th, and that project is also weather dependent. In IT, over the last period, 33 tickets were closed. The telephone upgrade project, depending on council approval, unless that just happened in the consent agenda, the long consent agenda, which just happened. And also, we're working on some other project updates, evaluating which of our copper lines we need to keep or discard moving forward. In the police department, our in-house instructors provided emergency vehicle and operation control training, which you have pictures of. It's a state mandated training that we complete every two years. Also on May 21st, staff read to the students at Washington Elementary for the Kiwanis Cops and Kids Program. Each student was provided a free book. In the fire department, over the period of May 15th through May 21st, staff responded to 46 calls, which is six and a half per day. Four calls required paid-on call. The average paid-on call response was two per, and mutual aid was requested once, and we did not request mutual aid. The following week, let's see. Sorry, I don't have those updates yet. Oh, yeah, here we are. Forty calls, 5.7 per day, four calls required a paid-on call response, and that average was .25. Mutual aid was not given nor received during that time. At the library, the library received an $11,000 grant from the Bridges Library System to fund a state-of-the-art hearing loop in the new community meeting room, so we're very excited about that. This assistive system transmits sound directly to hearing aids, making it some of the most popular technology for accessible audio in public spaces. And additionally, the library received a $4,500 Community Action Grant Award from the Whitewater Community Foundation for an AWE literacy station. This literacy station offers engaging digital tools that support early childhood education and promote school readiness in public libraries, and that is multilingual. So we're very excited about some of the grant awards we've been able to get as we continue the build-out of the library. In Parks and Recreation, we've started to get school groups coming in for the end of the year. We have groups in from Delevingne, Whitewater, Fort Atkinson, and the Janesville School District. Further, we ran our lifeguard recertification on May 24th. It's at capacity, so we're going to have another one. And also, we're going to run yet another lifeguard certification in mid-June. We're also going to have a table at the city market Tuesdays, 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., so please come visit us there. In Economic Development, Bauhaus renovations are underway, and it's been a while since we've done an update on that. Our interim economic development director is meeting with seven potential developers pertaining to housing projects, so prepare to hear more on that. Yes, she's doing a fantastic job. She's also responding to six new expanded business inquiries, and three new loans were approved by the CDA for Safe Pro, Edgerton Hospital, and Lemon and Sage Beauty Lounge. Also, Twin Oaks put in permits for 11 new mobile homes. Slater will be, that's the project at the end of Moraine View Parkway, will be breaking ground in June. 218 lead service pipe replacement permits were processed, and again, we're working with seven developers on housing projects. In Human Resources, we're accepting applications for several positions, including graphic information systems, and also various roles within Park and Recs, desk staff, lifeguards, concession workers, summer camp instructors. Oh, apparently, the employee of the year still remains under wraps for now, but more will be coming on that soon. And the city wishes, extends its best wishes to Laura as she embarks on an exciting new chapter. She's joining the City of DePere. She served as our GIS analyst since February of '24, and she's moving up there. I think she's got some family in that area, and it's a little step up for her. So we're always excited when, as I say, it's better to train people and have them leave than not train people and have them stay, so we're always excited when someone gets to grow and move on. As always, you can reach out to Chief of Staff Becky and my information there. Oh, I completed my Civic Emerging Leaders Training Education Program, so that's me holding the little plaque. So, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thanks, John. All right, next up, we have hearing of citizen comments. No formal council action will be taken during this meeting, although issues raised may become part of a future agenda. Participants are allotted a three-minute speaking period, and although specific items on the agenda may not be discussed at this time, we do allow for public input when those items come up for debate. So if there's anything not on the agenda anybody wished to speak on, just come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Anybody online?
No.
All right. All right, next up, we move on to resolution. Resolution to create Lake District in the City of Whitewater, so.
Michelle's got it for the least to kickoff.
All right, Michelle, why don't you kick us off, and then we'll figure out the logistical way we want to proceed with the debate and public input, so.
Okay, so I just put together, I know we've been here multiple times, so this presentation is just to answer some of the questions that were brought forward last time. So, the Lakes Advisory Committee is here, they are ready to talk, they're ready to move forward, they're ready to get things started and meet their goals, so I'm sure you'll hear from some of them. Next slide. So some of the questions that you guys had asked was about a referendum. So I had contacted Tim, and we kind of came up with a sample referendum question, so this is just basics. It would go to the election next year in April. So this is, this is all basic kind of information. Next slide. You had asked if we could, if you created a district, if there was a way to get rid of it. There definitely is, so this is kind of the legal and long version of how that happens. Also, in your packet, I included the Whitewater Rice Lake bylaws, so a lot of these helpful things are in that. You hadn't seen that document before, but it also lays out if you decided to move forward with the Lake District, and then it was no longer needed, wanted, this is how we would move forward with that. Next slide. You had asked about a budget, so basics, simple. I tried to do my best to be accurate on the numbers. We based it on a $200,000 budget. On the left, there are some things that we would put in there to meet the goals, getting peers, fish stocking, harvesting, having insurance, water quality testing, all of, some of the goals that the Lakes Advisory Committee would like to do. These are basic numbers that I really tried to kind of be on the spot with, but would fluctuate moving forward. Next slide. The other question was, what if we just focused on riparian owners, which would be just the lake owners? So, this information is from Walworth County GIS of 2024, so it outlays the homeowners on both. This one's Triple Lake. The next slide is Crevaath Lake, so it tells you the aggregated estimated value of both of these lakes. And then on the next slide, it will show you that if you only charged the riparian owners and created a lake district, we would max out the levy and only have a budget of about $51,000, and it would be a pretty heavy charge for those riparian owners. But you had asked if we just did lake owners, and this would be kind of the number we would be at. Next slide. So why, why should you do this? The people to my right are passionate, they're ready to get going, they're ready to make a difference, and they want to see everyone have an opportunity to enjoy the lakes. They want to give the community a chance to vote, be part of the projects, have a say, do the do-dilles. Lake Districts would oversee the budget and the projects, so once again, they would create the budget, would have to be approved, it could be a zero budget, this is not, all the examples that we gave were based on an estimate, so. And then they would also oversee the projects with kind of, with help from, from the city as well, so it's not completely on them. They would have annual meetings, they would discuss things, they would bring things to our town, so Lake District would be beneficial to the entire city. So, we are here asking to move forward to create a Lake District. Thank you.
All right, any questions for Michelle initially? Greg?
So, the voting on the budget, you had a referendum example, is that the only way a budget is created?
No, so if you create a Lake District, you would create a budget. So, in the initial things, you guys would be the commission board. We would create a budget, similar to the example that you had. You would bring it to the annual meeting. The community would also have the opportunity to put forth projects, things that they want. They would submit that to you guys as the Board of Commissions, and then it would be voted upon by everyone who attended that meeting. So, it could be more monies, it could be less monies, it could be zero.
I have a question for maybe the city manager then. Where does that money come from out of the city budget?
So if we start a Lakes District and fund it, if you do it with the district, it's an additional?
Levy.
Levy. The other way to do it, and that was, you saw, there's a referendum question proposed, and that would be the other way to get to the same place.
Okay. Just one clarifying question, because I want to give someone the opportunity to answer, because they said I was wrong in what I was saying last time. The people get to vote on the budget. Is that only through referendum?
Now, if you create a Lake District, the people would, at the annual meeting, would have a vote.
So they have to vote at the meeting?
They would vote at the meeting.
It's everyone in attendance who shows up to that meeting.
Is there a certain minimum people that have to be there, percentage-wise?
No.
And also too, on that voting, absentee and?
Proxy.
Proxy voting are not allowed.
I have one last question.
Sure.
The 5% debt limit against the Lake District, does that affect in any way the city's ability to borrow money? Because I also know we have limits, or general guidelines we were supposed to state.
What do you mean by the five?
There was one slide that talked about, you can take debt against it, but it has to be a?
So the Lake Districts is separate, separate on thing. It doesn't then affect the city, because the city can't borrow for?
Let's check with the DOR on that, but if it's similar to other entities like the CDA, that debt does not count against the city's cap, but let's, we'll call someone at the DOR. That's probably the best answer instead of speculating.
All right, I appreciate it. Thank you.
You take care of that?
Because we, yeah, Tim and I had worked with that slide.
Just one more clarifying, so if we approve it, it goes to the annual meeting, it looks like it's on July 26th, is what it's scheduled for now. They need 20% of the annual meeting turnout to take it over, or is it 20%?
20% to change the Board of Commission, to change you guys. So you would move forward with all of the needs that the Board of Commissions would need to do for a Lake District until you receive the 20% of signatures.
And it's 20% of the entire city?
Of the entire city, so it's a little over 3,000.
And it might be registered, it might get to be tempered by registered voters, again, if you need specifics, but it would be a substantial portion of the city's population that through petition would have to initiate that action, not, which is fundamentally different than how budgets are voted on, which is just the people who show up to that meeting that year. Does that make sense? Yep. Okay.
For the 20%, isn't it of landowners, is how it's written in?
Perhaps, that's, I'm speaking in generality.
Because 20% of landowners is a considerably smaller portion, it's about 600. There's about 3,000 parcels in the roll books.
And just to clarify, because the university is tax exempt, they are not levied under this district as well, similar to if they don't get levied by us or the school district. So they would not count as a landowner in this scenario, the state would not, just because they're not taxable?
I don't know, that's a very technical question you're asking me.
The cemetery would not be taxed as well either, so there's some, there are some on the lake that, that wouldn't fall into that. That's where the numbers when we did just riparian owners, we wouldn't be part of that as a city, the cemetery wouldn't be part of that as, that as well.
So if it's strictly landowners, then if the landowners got three parcels, would they get three votes?
You get one vote.
Okay.
What about tenants of?
The tenants are able to, to get a vote.
If they're in a non-tax exempt property, okay. Any other questions at this point for Michelle?
Sure. If, if the city were to, as opposed to creating a Lakes District, if the city were to expand, say, the duties and the responsibilities of the current Lakes Committee, and then consequently go to referendum for multi-year budgets for the lakes. How would, I, because I, I'm, that's kind of where I'm, where I'm headed on this, and what advantage, I mean, what advantage would the Lakes District have over, over the first scenario that I, that I proposed?
So, I think this might answer. So, creating a Lake District gives it back to the communities, so that they have a voice, they have an opportunity to come, vote, put forth things, projects that they want voted on, be part, more hands-on of the solution. If the district does not pass, the city will continue to, to work forward, to do peers, to do, you know, the, the grants and projects as well. We just have to stay within the limits, the, the budget that we're given. So I will still move forward and do items, if I just have to do them within the city budget.
What I also think I hear you saying is, in this theoretical world you've created, both would get approved. So what would be the difference to, say, having a Lakes District with a starting budget of $200,000, as opposed to a Lakes Advisory Committee with a voter-approved referendum for $200,000? Is that what you're asking?
For the most part, I mean, I'll throw it there, my concern is, is sure, the budget starts out at 200,000, say. You know, per state statute, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but per state statute, you know, I had inquired about this, and, you know, there's a, there's a, there's a maximum for the community currently, based on currents, that, of up to like $2.5 million that, per state statute, if you will, that could be, that this Lakes District would have the power eventually to tax. You know, and ultimately, you know, and, you know, and if you look at the slide you had before with the numbers, you know, that would eventually give the Lakes District the power to tax, you know, in addition, this is a new tax authority, this new tax could, for a $350,000 house, it would be almost $1,000 a year, you know, if they were to max out. And that's, that, that, that is what concerns me. And if my numbers are wrong, please correct me, but I'm pretty sure about that.
I had a question, kind of piggybacking on what Mike had, is, are Lakes Districts subject to the same levy limits that municipalities are? I mean, I know schools have their own funding formula, cities have our levy limits. How do Lake Districts get constrained in terms of not being able to go?
Up to two and a half mils, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, two and a half mils is the top, which creates the, it's about a, my numbers are, I'd have to go back to it, but it's like 150 per 100,000, or is it more than that? We'd have to run the calculations, but yes, they are eventually capped.
But once they hit that two and a half, yeah, they're capped at that, so they can't increase it that every year, that's the max.
I think Mike's point is it's a significant, that cap is a significant amount at this point, that could be, if I'm following your logic through, could be decided at a future meeting by the people in attendance.
The other thing I just want to clarify is we're talking about the referendum. So the referendum that's in our packet, the sample, is more of an advisory referendum to see if we should approve it, because this is not structured like a levy exceeding our debt, like we did with the fire department, where we're going to go to the voters and say, we want to increase our debt limit, or not our debt limit, our levy limit by 200,000 for the purposes of spending it on the lakes, so then that's through the city. This is just saying, are you okay with creating a Lake District with a budget of $200,000? Is that, yeah. So this is not binding, you know, if the voters say yes, that doesn't necessarily bind any action of this body. So I think if we're talking about a, using a levy referendum to say, okay, because just passing this one give $200,000 to the Lake Committee, that would be required by city budget and compete with all the other, you know, demands, where if we did it as an, you know, like we did with the fire department and the police referendum, we would be asking to exceed that levy, and the city would be levying it, or we could create the district and let them tax it and take it out of the city budget almost, all the lake management would go on. All the lake management would go onto that district, but it would be an additional cost to the taxpayer.
I have a technical question, and it's really my only hangup. Can we require any budget to be approved at referendum in the creation of this district? I am 110% okay if it's voted on and approved on by the majority of the population. I truly am. I'm terrified of a small group creating a budget that taxes the entire community. We don't even have that power up here. We are restricted beyond that. So I don't know if that's a question that can be answered. Now...
So the short answer is, one, I don't know if we can referendum, if you could put it in a referendum to set a budget. Even if you can, it would only be a budget for that initial year. Then whoever shows up at the annual meeting, budget meeting...
Can't make it a requirement?
Not in perpetuity.
That all budgets be set? Okay.
So while it could pass at a certain level, it could then go to the 2.5 mil.
So then what's the separation between a lake project referendum and the Lake Police and Fire? Because that, the Police and Fire is in perpetuity, correct?
Greg was asking a question if through referendum question, we could bind the Lakes District not to exceed a certain budgetary authority.
Got it.
So I think what I'm hearing from the council is they're circling around two ideas. What is the difference between moving forward with the Lakes District as designed by resolution versus, it sounds to me like a binding referendum question?
Which we don't have the power to do, I don't think.
What?
A binding referendum?
Not today. No, but you could do a, put a referendum question on there, asking the taxpayers if they wanted to exceed the levy. We could, not today, we could put that question together and go through the same process that you would go through for other referendums.
But the earliest that would take effect would be 2027.
The next, yes.
Yes, that is correct.
I'm just trying to read it all right now, and just, maybe you have a quicker response. But if this is formed, they get the 20% petition, it's completely its own district. Where, what is, where does it stop? So is it strictly the water? Is it from the shoreline and so many feet? Where, just reading this through here, I don't see how this, if on page 728 and 729, general management activities, it doesn't seem like what's in there is going to help our problem. I guess, I'm just trying to figure out where does, we approve this, can they start? You know, how far can their authority go past the water line?
So they can't do anything like in the city, but they can help with things up and down the streams, the waterways, the erosion, all of the nutrients that come from upstream, things that go downstream. They can do items with the peers, they can do items within the water for plant management, harvesting, they can apply for dredging, spraying, help with fish stocking, water quality testing, things that, kiosks, benches, things that could happen in our parks, boat ramp, you know, maintenance improvements, items, items like that. So it's not a specific depth of the water or, or length into the water, so it's...
My other question, then, number two of this is, under protecting lake habitat through, it says acquisition of land or conservation easements to protect sensitive areas. So do they essentially become their own government? That they could use eminent domain to take land?
I'd have to research that question, please.
Okay.
But they are a quasi-government entity.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions at this point?
I'll throw out there a few stats. I did, I did look into, I did look into the Lakes Districts in Wisconsin. There's 15,000 lakes in Wisconsin, 400 Lakes Districts. And I'll throw it there that I got this from AI, and I tried to dig in. So, you know, there's, there might be a little, it might, the numbers might be a little off, but I, I have a little bit of, I have confidence in them, I guess. Of the 400 roughly Lakes Districts, over half of them have a budget under 25,000. Roughly, give or take, roughly 20 of them serve communities of over 800 households. And those, those Lakes Districts are almost exclusively tourist lakes. And, you know, I would think something that would probably be the closest to what we have here would be Lake Como, which they did some rehabilitation and such, which I think is a lot of the purpose that we're trying to do here. I guess what I'm saying is, is that it's, this isn't, this isn't completely unique, but it's, it's, it's particularly the, asking the additional households is, is rare.
Any other questions at this point? Otherwise, is there an objection to opening it up for public comment? So we are opening it up for public comment. I, I think we have some people signed up already, so we'll turn it over to Heather for that. Each person gets three minutes. And Heather, if you want to read the first name and...
Sure. Brad, and I'm sorry, I cannot read the last name. Brad, if you want to speak.
Hi, my name's Brad Sfransky. I live in Towne, Whitewater. The thing I'm looking at here is, you've already taken 1.5 million dollars of city has, as a whole, and you put it into the hands of people with no expertise, and they, it's like grind down that money, threw it in the lake, and I watched the process go forward the last time. It was a waste. You had eight trucks, one loader, and then the comment was, well, we didn't have enough time to get the soil out. Those trucks were waiting for over an hour to get reloaded. I mean, it was incompetent to see these trucks just idling for hours at a time. That's number one. Number two is like, why not make this a referendum question whether or not we should? This is a big step. And you say, well, for the voters, for the voters, once we get it established, we can have referendums. Why don't you have a referendum to see whether or not the city is in favor of doing this in the first place? Number three is, we haven't even seen our property tax increase from, from the additional five officers that we put on. That's going to be an increase in everybody's property taxes this year. You won't see that till December. And, and this here is like, you take a group of people with no expertise in, in lake management, no, no experience in DNR lake management, and you say, we're going to, we're going to form this committee. It's, it's like, hey band, hey gang, let's put on a show. That, that'll fix it. So you don't have any experts on this panel, it's just some people that want to get involved with the lake. You, you know, you haven't talked to the DNR yet to see what you can do, and you're proposing something without any foreknowledge of, of what's available to do, and what you can do, and what the DNR is going to let you do, because this isn't just like, give us money and we'll do something. You, you have to have those things in place before you come before a committee and say, we want to do this. You, you've researched nothing. This is just something we want to do, and here's how we get the money. It's the only thing you researched. How do we get the money from the average voter out in town? And if it was as important as, and popular as you think it was, you'd make a referendum and just let people decide one by one. If you're a property owner in this town, you should be able to vote on. And if it's approved, that'd be great. If not, we muddle along some other way. I mean, we've been cleaning up the front of the park, that's nice. We've been, you know, cleaning up, but dredging permits are very difficult to get from the Wisconsin DNR. There's soil contamination, there's lots of studies that have to go into doing anything in a waterway. I know this because I own properties with bodies of water on them. Just getting a pond dredged out, that's a standalone pond. It's not as easy as just saying, hey, I'm going to run a backbone, go in there and clean that out. Permitting, you have, you know, and it's costly. Machine time's expensive. So this $50 an hour starting out, $50 per, or $25 per 100,000 of assessment, and up to 250. When you give people the ability to spend other people's money, they're going to take advantage of that. So, so, you know, like, to say, oh, we're not going to probably raise it. Okay, well, then just cap it at $25 for the first 10 years, or the first five years, and see what you can do with that money. But, you know, you give this arbitrary number that we're going to start it here, it's easy. So I, I, I think this is a bad idea, I think it's ill conceived.
All right, Heather?
Mark Moss?
I know I'm a little late to this party, and I have not attended all of the meetings that have gone on before. As a lifelong resident of Whitewater, 72 years, I see the value of the lakes that we have here. And I understand that we've got to find the best way that we can financially and doing it satisfactorily so that we meet the needs of the entire community. My concern is that we, all of a sudden, don't do anything, and it just continues to just sit the way that it is. Several years ago, we had a group come in, an advisory group, who told us, it's probably been about 25, 30 years now, that our greatest resource in this town was our lakes, and that we needed, we should do everything we could to make them as viable and sustainable as we could. And so, I get it, your job's not easy here, trying to decide how we're going to finance this. But there has to be a way. And I, I haven't heard any talk about applying for grant money, DNR money, anything like that. And I'm not sure what has been done previous. I certainly don't want us to reinvent the wheel. I think it would behoove us to possibly see what other communities have done and how they've gone about doing things. I know Delevingne did something with Lake Como several years ago, and tried to make that viable. But there was a time when people came here from out of town and fished in these lakes, both of them, and they were, they were viable lakes, and they were places that people actually came to. So I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater here. I, I just hope that we can find a way to make this viable without causing too much pain to the taxpayer, whether it's through the Lake District or whether it's through a referendum. I just hope that we can find a way to do some kind of restoration and, and bring these back. Thank you.
All right.
Lee?
So I moved here about five years ago from Edgerton, so I have a little bit of experience with Lake District over there, because I did live out on the lake. Everybody was up in arms about it when it first was proposed. Everybody was scared of what was going to happen, and our taxes were going to go crazy. I'm not in favor of higher taxes, but this community basically has the lakes and the university. Without those, I mean, this city is not much. I'm all for creating this Lake District. I'm all for doing something different than what has been done, because when we moved here five years ago, we looked at buying property on the lake, and it was a swamp. You know, I literally walked out to the end of a seven-acre property, and all you could see is cattails and monk. So we didn't end up buying over there. But something different has to be done. And if we can make that happen in a cost-effective way, I'm all for it. Thank you.
Donald Huntington?
Good evening. Nice to be here with you guys tonight. I know this is a, a lot of discussion about the mechanics of getting a Lake District. What I don't want to see happen is lost about what is the point of having a Lake District. My involvement, and I'm so appreciative of the committee allowing me to participate, and some people at the council here allowing me to participate at this level. And I'd like to say that, I'd like to use a couple of four-letter words. First one is lake. It's such a small word that describes something that's so critical to us as a planet and as you, as a community. The other four-letter word I'd like to use is body. I'd like you to consider this a body, a body of water, a body that's alive. At the bottom, the sediment, so critical to what this lake is going to become. You have to understand how it works. The main body of the water, alive with fish, all kinds of activity, giving us opportunities to go out and, and express just some comfort and relaxation. And of course, on the top of the water, you have the birds, the animals. All of those things are there. It's like nature putting on a show for you. You just have to go down there and sit and enjoy it. And in fact, I would like the council to do that once a year, if you would just have a picnic, just, just you guys. Don't talk about politics. Go down there and just enjoy the nature. I don't know how much time you've spent down there, but you have a wonderful opportunity here. You have a wonderful thing that was given to you over the many years. It started for purposes of industry and providing food and so forth for the public. That's what made it a popular at that time and a necessary one. But you gained it, it's back to you, it's been turned over to you. You have a huge responsibility to take care of it, to restore it. And that's who I like to look at lakes, because I've been working on this for a decade, to understand how they function. I've been working with the university, did a lot of studies, a lot of capstone projects. And this is not rocket science, but it does have a level of science and biology that you need to understand. And you guys have a near opportunity to extend this into the future, beyond your existence, beyond our existence, to the children. And this is a small amount of money, if you look at it in the context of your budget. And I know you have a lot of issues, a lot of responsibilities, but please take a look at this as not just something like putting a road in or building a sidewalk. This is about restoring the very nature, the very existence of your city. It's called Whitewater. I mean, it's even in your name. So, thank you. And please make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Carol?
Carol McCormick, 555 East Clay Street. Currently a member of the Lakes Advisory Board and a former city council member, so I understand the decisions that are in front of you tonight. Before I get gabbled, I'd like to start by thanking Michelle DeJardine for her timeless work for the Lake Advisory. She's done a lot of research, and she's given you a lot of facts and figures to contemplate before you make your vote. She's done, I think, a very good job of educating you guys, and I, I assume you've already had the questions already answered that you had tonight. I only want to share the statement that I should have been in your packet. I was too late submitting it. Sorry, I'm going to get an F on that. What I wanted to say is, a trip in for Rad Lake District is the best option for passing this resolution because we all must actively preserve our natural resources that our city was gifted by our founding fathers. Other cities would be envious of having just one lake in their city limits. We have two. As it's been said before, kind of, I guess it's kind of contrite, it truly does take a village to preserve these lakes. And I have devoted probably close to 16, 19 years serving on committees, heading committees on this lake, and this is kind of like a pull the golden ring. This is the time we make a decision to go forward. And this is not really a referendum, this is just a resolution. So if you pass this tonight, it's not going to cost anybody any money at all. That's down in the future. So we hope to take this very, very seriously. I've spent a lot of my time on these lakes. And as an aside, I think the word's getting around because of the big uptick on trip lake of canoeers and boaters appreciating what we have here. Thank you.
Ginny Coburn?
Hi, I'm Ginny Coburn. I live on Tripp Lake. I just want to talk a little bit about what my, how Lake Districts work in the communities where the lakes have really been improved. You understand when you approve this tonight, all of you will become the Lake District Commissioners and your first duty is to figure out something to spend money on, like for example, cattails, let's just give a example. It's not a real, to remove some of the cattails, it's not going to be a big involvement or a big expense. And the other thing is to plan a program, what to do in the next year. The statutes require that you meet four times a year in obviously a public meeting. And what, I think that's a great advantage because the lake is going to be, the lakes are going to be looked at and monitored and discussed four times a year, every season. And I think it's that attention to the lakes, you know, in this day and age of changes happening politically and in our environment, it's an important thing to pay attention to the lakes virtually constantly. And the, because we really don't know what we're going to be dealing with in the future. I mean, the cattails that resulted from our Lake Improvement Project a few years ago were unexpected. They have happened in other lakes, but they were unexpected. So, we need to keep an eye on how conditions are changing in other lakes and what we're going to be looking at. And then invasive aquatic plants, there's a couple of serious ones called, it sounds like Godzilla. It is a Godzilla. It's traveling in the upper Midwest. The other one is water hyacinth. We don't have it in the lakes yet, but it'll be a real disaster if we do get them. So, I urge you to approve this because it will get the ball rolling. You certainly, you represent five districts in the city plus two people to at large. So, you represent, you know what your constituents are going to accept. And then, it has to be approved at the annual meeting by the voters that are present. So, it's not that you're going to set a budget and it's going to happen.
Jenny, your time has expired.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right.
All right. Two more. John Gable?
I'm too ignorant to say too much, but I had the pleasure of living in this city back in the sixties and we really enjoyed the lakes. So, from my perspective, whatever you figure out, being far wiser on the issue than I'll ever be, to have a return to some more utopic reality to what they are. I could waste a lot of my time telling the stories about the lakes and people that were on them and enjoying them. I'm not going to do that, but I do support you moving forward and finding your way to do as much to benefit the lakes as you do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Which one?
Jeff Hale.
I'd like to thank the council for their attention and their great questions tonight. Also, a P.S., thank you to Michelle. She's just been amazing for our group the last nine, ten months. Great causes for Whitewater are always worth fighting for. Great causes become the fundamental cores of our community. Great causes like Traiton's Field of Dreams, our public library, Downtown Whitewater, Mounds Park, Crevaath Lakefront Park, the Aquatic Center, our police fire and EMS. At the last council meeting, there was a comment made about constituents shouldn't have to pay for something they don't use. Well, there's a public library in town that you may not ever use, but it's a great part of the community. There's Traiton Fields of Dreams that you may never have gone to because you don't have kids or grandkids, but it's a great core part of our community. There's Mounds Park out there with effigies and a lot of history about the Indians that used to travel here, and you may have never been there, but it's still a core part of our community. Great causes tend to cement history and I've been involved in a lot of great causes in Whitewater and I think up to now, this is probably one of the greatest ones that I've had the ability to be a part of. Thank you very much.
That's it for the paper.
All right. Is there anybody who did not sign up in advance that wished to speak?
Kevin Green, 365 West Ann Street. I've lived in that property now for going forty-plus years. I've seen the ups and downs of the lakes and the comment that the gentleman on the end made about this being a unique situation about the money, the landowners and the people and the taxpayers in this city didn't create this situation. These lakes, ten years ago, were a hundred times better than they are now. So, by having this committee, at least you have a group of people that are going to be involved in the lakes. They're not here to try to screw anybody about overtaxing people. We don't want to be taxed anymore. I'm basically getting taxed out of my house now, but the issue is these lakes need to be fixed up. I was in Jefferson this weekend and I've seen three of my old schoolmates that I haven't seen in a long time and every single one of them, and I'm not exaggerating, I'm not making this up, said the exact same thing. What did they do to those lakes in this town? You're a laughing stock. These lakes are a laughing stock. You've got committees that want to do something and focus on fixing it and you're worried about them trying to screw the city? They're not here to do that. They're trying to make it better. So, just think about that. Thank you.
We'll do Jeff Knight and then Gail.
Okay.
Sorry. Go ahead, Gail.
However, you want to do it.
Gail Stettler, 327 West Ann Street. I just want to thank the members of this committee. John interviewed us with Jim Allen when he was still here, put us together. And for over a year, we have looked at sewer pack, we have looked at upstream, we have looked at current, you name it. This group has been really incredibly diligent. And so, my thanks to them and I encourage the council to weigh it and it's in your hands.
Jeff Knight, 405 Panther Court. So, I live on the far west side of town and I've had conversations with Jeff Hale and other members of this committee and I've always taken the approach that would be, from my perspective, better if they just did the owners on the lakefront and collect some reasonable amount of tax, do some of their projects and then to approach the city for bigger projects. And the reason is the city sets a tax rate levy for us annually and I'm afraid that come December, when I get my new bill with the new levy limits from construction improvements, also from the school district and from the city. When this project was first worked on, it was $1.3 million project and it failed. It failed miserably and I think a lot of it was the timing of getting the things out and then the delay of a year. And so, my concern when I've talked to Jeff was, well, what if you would put a pathway around that everybody in the community could use it like they did in Lake Geneva? Or, but in all fairness, from all the work they've done and everything that's said, I do believe we need to fix these lakes. We need to get them done. But I think probably the fairest way to do it is to do a referendum. It doesn't have to be a binding referendum, a non-binding referendum, that asks everybody in the community if you want this. And if the decision comes back yes, I support it a hundred percent. If it comes back no, then we need to figure out how the city fixes what happened because in all fairness, it was a city project that went afoul, that got us in the trouble that we're in today. So, I do think we need to work on this. I think we need to spend some dollars on it. I like Mike, one of your ideas, it certainly wouldn't hurt. The city had somebody that could be out there cleaning some of this up and get approval to do that, but I'm not sure that I want to talk to my neighbors and say, hey, let's go down to that meeting and vote against the tax increase because they're not going to think about it. The people that'll be at those meetings are the people that are in this room, that live on that lake and I'm afraid that there's no top limit on what could be taxed and that's my fear. What is Sharon and I going to have to pay to continue to live in Whitewater? Will that be affordable tomorrow?
All right. Anybody else wishing to speak that hadn't previously signed up?
I do have one online.
All right. Do you want to? Christine, you should be able to talk.
Yes, thank you. Hey, this is Christine Zabios, 1143 West Wallers Avenue, not on the lake. I just wanted to add to some of the thoughts, particularly those in appreciation for this team of people who got together and has really dug deep and including doing site visits across the state to better understand what the Lake District should be. I also want to say that I put my trust in this team. It's a pretty, they're really impressively broad set of citizens from this community and I don't think any, I think they're thinking of all of us and not just their own properties as they approach this issue. So, I'm not concerned personally. My rights as a citizen who doesn't live on the lake are not going to be considered. I think they're thinking about all of us and the conversations I've had with people on the committee, I feel like they're trying to do what's best for Whitewater as a whole. And Whitewater, everything from the city market we all love to the Crevaath Lakefront Park that Jeff talked about, those are things that are gems that we need to protect. So, I think when you have a group of people this disparate and passionate who have come together and really done the work, it behoves us to listen to them and honor their work. Thank you very much. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Christine. Anybody else online?
No.
All right. Anybody else in the public wishing to speak? All right. We'll turn it back over to council for any additional questions, comments, or any action. I think a non-binding referendum is a great idea to see if the public approves.
This is a super technical question, but I know the school district may have to go up for another referendum next year. Would that most likely probably be in November? I'm just having flashbacks to this past.
Generally, theirs are in April.
Huh?
Generally, theirs are in April.
Okay.
So, they would both be on April's ballot.
Let's go. Maybe it's been answered, but if this is created, the council becomes the de facto board of directors up front. Can we set any rules during that time that will fall over if they take over, if they get 20% petition to take it over? The reason I say that is, so I got page 737, I'm just concerned, this is not to anybody specifically on the lake, but same thing that all of us and anybody that's elected is held to is conflict of interest of taking an action or something in which they or their immediate family or an organization which they are associated have substantial financial interest. So, if you live on the property, it's, just say, what I'm getting at is, two years from now, only people on the lake are on the board of directors or at the annual meeting. They all vote to raise, I'm just saying they raised it $100,000, but isn't that a conflict of interest for everyone in the room if there's nobody from outside of the lake living on it? And what I guess what I'm trying to get at is, if we were to start it, could we say you have to have minimum five non-lake living, or I guess what is it, riparian? I don't know what the terminology would be, but can we set boundaries that way of must-have so many and would it fall over or would it carry over?
I think I was going along the same lines. Neil, in terms of the bylaws, are there, you know, if the council as the initial board of directors establishes bylaws in terms of thresholds, whether it be on board makeup or based on a certain threshold of voters present or a two-thirds vote to raise above a certain amount, is the, I mean, obviously the manual meeting, they could amend that, but if the threshold was set to, you know, a two-thirds was required to amend, you know, is there some parameters that the council could put on that future body or itself?
I'll have to definitely double-check on some of those questions. I know in chapter 33, it's laid out and how the new board of commissioners needs to be established and it's established by vote as well, too. So, it's who's showing up, who's voting for those new board and commissioners and it has to be approved by those at the meeting. So, I would have to research and talk to legal of if they were all riparian owners, if that is a conflict of interest or not, but they're there, they vote. The part of the Lake District being open to the entire community is definitely one of the benefits because, you know, they want to be part of this, they want to make a difference. So, you want them at the meeting because you want them, those that are concerned, to show up, be part of the solution. So, to answer your question, I don't, there are rules that the state puts with the statute of how many need to be and their terms and things like that.
As far as the conflict, it wouldn't be because the decisions they're making affect all taxpayers equally, even though I understand the perception concern you're raising, but because it's, that's the shortest version.
Right.
It applies to everybody uniformly.
John, I had a question. I think you'd mentioned, or maybe it was at the prior meeting, about sewer pack study that's also outstanding?
What's the timeline on the?
So, the aquatic plant management, one that you had approved February. Actually, the DNR has it. We're making a couple adjustments to it because the DNR would like us to place some navigational channels of if we want to apply for permits in the future, whether it be the city or the Lake District because they're going to use it, too. It would be easier to apply for permits for any kind of harvesting if we were to have that in the plan. So, the DNR is well aware of where we're moving forward. They're well aware that we're here tonight asking for this. So, they've been part, I should say, Heidi has been a part of all of these conversations. The comprehensive plan is in the works and it is scheduled to be done 2027.
Any other questions at this point?
I'll add that I would be supportive of a referendum, binding or non-binding, to get the financial resources that basically this Lakes Committee would be asking for.
Yeah, I don't think there's any disagreement on this body and in the community that the lakes are important. that the lakes are important. I was on council at the beginning of the million-dollar dredging effort. I wasn't there when it actually went underway. But I remember during that time, you know, we had DNR. There were experts that advised. But one of the questions that came up on and again and again is, well, how long is this remediation going to hold? Could it be 20 years? Is it going to be a year? Is it going to be five years? And the answer was, we don't know. So, I mean, the city made that investment at that time to try to address something with the lakes, because there was a large amount of overgrowth. And I remember the Jayhawk ski team couldn't do their Fourth of July efforts anymore on it. You know, it was bad then. And I think that the struggle is, even back in that discussion, it's, yeah, the lakes in the 60s and that were different. I mean, Marilyn Keenbaum would always talk about people swimming in Triple Lake. But the issue is, with more and more phosphorus runoff and other invasive species that have taken hold, and the fact that it is not a natural lake, they are both impoundments, is, you know, how much money are we going to be able, as a community, to marshal to basically combat Mother Nature? But, you know, we have to do something, but it's, the Lake District may be the best option. I just, making it the whole community is where I'm a little skittish on. But to me, it would be a dedicated funding stream that would be able to address that crown jewel. Well, maybe not crown jewel right now, but something that we can rehabilitate to a crown jewel without, you know, competing with firefighters and police officers and other critical city services, which it has been for a long time. But in terms of the mechanism, I think that's where we're hung up.
What is the timing on the updated sewer pack report?
The comprehensive plan is 2027, and that was set by sewer pack.
And I'll also just point out, so Orrin Smith was unable to be here tonight due to illness. Was also not able to be online, but they did send over a statement in terms of their perspective. Obviously, won't be able to vote tonight, but I just wanted to read that into the record if there's no objection, just so we have all voices heard. So Orrin writes, "I'm in favor of the Lake District for many reasons. Even the formation of this proposal has shown what a small group of passionate locals can accomplish, and I have no doubt that the Lake District would show the same result. The lakes are an asset to the whole community, and I believe that it is important to treat them that way. Lake Districts in surrounding areas are, have been successful and are relatively common. I think that this is a shining example of a situation where the council must work with the community for the betterment of all, and I look forward to seeing what the Lake District can accomplish." And Orrin did indicate that if they were here, they would vote in favor. So any motion or any direction to staff in terms of where we go from here?
I would like to make a motion to direct city staff to investigate a slate of binding and non-binding referendums to bring back to council in Q3 this year for placement on the April 2026 ballot.
Is there a second?
I second.
All right, discussion? Steve, did you have something?
Well, I think that the longer we delay this action, the worse the lakes will be. We have a group of impassioned people that are willing to work on it now. I think if we delay our prospect, it's going to negatively impact the lakes. I'd hope we'd be able to move forward with this.
I would think the timing of the referendum versus the timing of the Lakes District getting funding on their own would be very similar. I'll add as well that I think the comments have been made about the work that's being done on the lakes, something that I have enquired about, and I'd like to, and it would be part of any type of referendum, would be, you know, adding maybe a staff member that, obviously, Michelle's doing an awesome job, as always. But somebody that would do things like actually physically maintain the lakes, cleaning up the shoreline, working with the DNR, working with the committees, working with, working through the grants, I think we have that opportunity, and that can be taken through, can be mitigated through referendum.
I think my only struggle is, if they, if we do establish the Lake District this year, that I believe those, that levy would go into effect beginning next year.
Next year.
So it would delay it a little bit. The other thing that would be helpful is if we had, I know, cover yours, Heather, if we had a November election, which we do not this year. So now we're looking out into April of next year, which is nine months away. You know, I wish we had something a little bit sooner to tee it up for the voters, because the committee has done a lot of work, and I'd like to get to some finality.
I realize that, that like, and there's nothing else in November. Do, I'm assuming that there's no opportunity to, okay.
I don't think so. I know the legislature has continually limited the ability for referendums, even what you can have them on.
I would have to read the law, but I don't think you can attach them to a special election anymore either. But again, we would have to do research on that. So I think where you're at is if something came up, could we jump on that? And I don't think that we could.
So I think that's my concern about that. But at the same time, it's like, how do we truly get a representative sample of the district? Brian, did you have anything else you wanted? Greg?
I mean, just the reason I'm supportive of the referendum question is you get the voice of everyone, or the majority, at least, or the majority of the people who vote. I think this ask is just, all the concerns I spoke, this meeting and last meeting, it's just too big of an ask. I would support a smaller Lake District. I would support if we could do some wording in the bylaws or something to restrict future asks. I'm 100% behind it. I want to see the lakes be better. If the referendum is a yay, then I'm a yay.
I think my only other, because we're talking about the referendum, the people who would be voting in the referendum are different than potentially the property owners who are affected. So we talked about the university. And there's a huge chunk of students that would not be able to vote as part of the district that would be able to vote on a referendum either up or down. So if they all voted no, they're never going to, yeah. But they, this purely, on other referendums, yes, it does affect the property taxpayer, but the way that the referendums are, it's eligible voters. This one, when you get into the nuts and bolts of if a district was established and there's the annual meeting, those people can't vote. So I think that's, it's more of maybe a technical concern. And then there was one other question I had. Oh, so there is a third option, and this is the one where I was a little hopeful that the committee and those interested individuals were, would maybe have headed down this path, is the petition. So there is a method for the district ownership. So you'd have to get X amount of individuals within the district, which would be the city, to sign a petition that is then presented. That would show, that, if there was a petition in front of us, I would have no problem with that. But without the petition, it's hard to gauge where the community is at on that for people that live out in Neil's district or out on District 4. It's an asset for all of us, but that's just my one concern about, there was a third option. It wasn't just, you know, putting a referendum on or you're doing the resolution right now. It was also a petition that is originated by the district membership.
Pat, would the petition route allow for a shorter time period than a referendum route? In other words, if we, if there were a petition, if we do a referendum, it's going to be in the next April for the referendum, and then we're talking about this next June. So we're talking about next year, that would be still talking about this. Whereas if we did a petition, it would be able to be, we'd be able to show that there is a community backing in a much shorter time period. Is that correct?
Yes, with the caveat that you'd be asking other people to be putting that position, petition together. And it also depends on how fast they get signatures. If they don't ever get the signatures, or the work isn't put into that effort, it could conceivably take longer and/or be never. So I think I do hear what the group is saying regarding that, but it's not like the city staff would be going out and getting signatures. In this world, you'd be asking the Lakes Advisory Committee to take that task on.
And you would need 51%, and the law is very prescriptive of when the annual meeting is. And with that, and notice requirements for said meeting, and when we, where we currently sit in the calendar, that would be a tight ask to fit that in, to get 51%.
And the 51%, is that landowners or voters? I'm not sure. I would have to look again to look.
And the other thing, too, that I, and the petition route, too, you know, it would be 51%, so it'd be, again, majority, is, at least in that initial budget setting stage, is that in the city of Whitewater, we have a very diverse workforce that works a lot of different shift times. And so having that annual meeting at one specific time, where you cannot have any types of absentee votes and things like that, the people that are going to be most impacted by that may be the most disenfranchised by having that specific time slot. Whereas with, for example, going the referendum route, there's absentee, there's early voting, there's the day of voting, there's a much wider window for those people to put their vote, voice in.
Yep. So there's a motion and a second to direct city staff to draft up potential referendum questions for placement on the April 7th.
Both binding and non-binding, as I understood the language.
All right, any other discussion? All right, Heather, if you'd please call the roll.
Hicks?
Aye.
Singer?
No.
Mike Smith?
Aye.
Sayoun?
No.
Mayshak?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
All right. That motion carries forward to two. Any other discussion or direction regarding this, at this point? All right. Is there an expectation of, I mean, obviously, we would need, there's a certain timeline to get it on the ballot, but do we want to see things by October, November, just, I mean, we don't have to?
I said Q3.
Oh, Q3, okay, sorry.
You're good.
Early Q3, probably, just to.
Yeah, hoping that that fits somewhere in that magical timeline.
All right. Any further action on that item? All right, next up, we have ordinances, first reading. First up is ordinance 2025-016, and ordinance amending 2.73.010 Lakes Advisory Committee's membership to include one member of the common council. Is there a motion to approve? Move and approve.
Second.
Moved by Mayshak, seconded by Sayoun to approve the first reading. Pretty self-explanatory. Are there any questions on that ordinance?
We will coordinate at the next agenda, having an appointment after that in the process. So you don't need to figure that out today. We'll have it after the second reading, next go round.
All right.
I'm sorry.
All right.
Who motioned and who seconded?
Mayshak and Sayoun.
Thank you.
Yeah, can we, can we, if you're going to have a conversation, can you take it out in the hallway? Thank you.
Okay, ready for.
Mayshak, Sayoun, second. All right, any other questions? Any public comment? All right, roll call, Heather.
Mike Smith?
Aye.
Singer?
Aye.
Sayoun?
Aye.
Hicks?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Mayshak?
Aye.
All right.
Motion to waive second reading of ordinance 2025-016.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, moved by Shannon, seconded by Mayshak to waive the second reading. This would require a two-thirds vote, so five members, or five, I think still five members. So Heather, if you'd please call the roll.
Mayshak?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Hicks?
Aye.
Sayoun?
Aye.
Singer?
Aye.
Mike Smith?
Aye. Disappointing information, two-thirds of six is four. I think it's seven.
What was it of members?
Oh, I don't know.
It might be members, is it members present or members elect?
Ah, sorry.
We'll look. It has, it was unanimous. We don't have to get into the math now. All right, next up, we have ordinances 2025-019, and ordinance amending section 11.12.011, stop signs by adding stop signs at Peck and Witten. Brian, was this?
Yes, so had number constituents reach out regarding this intersection specifically when dealing with pedestrian school traffic, and that there had been some change in signage at the Lincoln Elementary School exit that caused some traffic to start rerouting differently over the past, I would say about 12 months or so, that's led more cars down through Peck, I believe, and Witten, and posed a challenge for, and concerns for parents with children walking home from school.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
All right, is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? All right, that motion fails for lack of a second. Is there any other action on that item? All right. We pulled 22 off. Next up is second reading of ordinance 2025-018, and ordinance amending chapter 2.08.010, meetings to change the time of the common council meeting from 6:30 PM start time to 6:30 to 6:00 PM start time. So.
Second.
You've already been doing it at a couple of meetings. So moved by Mayshak, seconded by Shannon to approve the second reading. Any discussion? Public comment? Heather, if you'd please call the roll.
Singer?
Aye.
Hicks?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Sayoun?
Aye.
Mayshak?
Aye.
Mike Smith?
Aye.
All right, next up, we move on to, oh, considerations we've already taken care of. So I'll move on to council requests for future agenda items. Mike, I'll start with you. Do you have anything for future, Brian?
I know we'd already called them out, but the late appointment to the Lake Committee and then the 2025-020, make sure that comes back.
Steve, anything for a future agenda? All right, Greg?
No.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Brian, Shannon, Greg, Mayshak, second. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for working through all of that like you did.
That's one thing we missed Orrin on. Second, second, second.